Hi, I'm Jill Goldsmith, Chatham Town Manager. Thank you for tuning into this special town meeting preview show on Chatham TV. On September 18th, 2023, at 6:00 PM, the Town of Chatham will hold a special town meeting at the Monomoy Regional Middle School to vote on eight articles. I'm here with Chatham staff to review each article in detail and note recommendations from town boards and committees to help you make informed decisions at the special town meeting. Articles were reviewed in the order in which they appear in the warrant. The warrant is available online via the town's website, and hard copies will be available at town offices. This special town meeting will be held at the Monomoy Regional Middle School, 425 Crow Road, on Monday, September 18th, at 6:00 PM. Starting us off, we'll be Town of Chatham Finance Director Alex Halala.
Thank you, Jill. I'm Alex Halala, your Finance Director, and I'm here to discuss the financial impacts of the articles for the special town meeting, which is scheduled for September 18th, 2023, 6:00 PM, at the Monomoy Regional Middle School. The first article for discussion is the prior fiscal year bill payment appropriation. This article is for $194.27, and this is for bills that were received after the close of the fiscal year for which there is no encumbrance to pay. The funding source will be identified at town meeting. We're hopeful that free cash will be certified at that time. If not, the funds will be taken from other available funds, so no impact to the tax rate. The Select Board voted to approve this five to zero, and the Finance Committee will be meeting later this week, Friday, September 1st, to discuss Articles 1, 2, 3, and 4, and have their recommendations. However, those recommendations won't be able to be printed in the warrant, so we ask that you tune into the Finance Committee meetings again September 1st to discuss Articles 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then next week, the week of September 5th, for the remaining articles. Article 2 is the current year budget adjustments. This is for $60,000, and this is to appropriate money for the Volunteer Park Playground. The funds are coming from the Fire Department's FY 2024, the current fiscal year budget, which had excess appropriation due to the final lease payment being paid in FY 2023. So we're asking for $60,000 to come from Public Safety and transferred into the Parks and Recreation to fund the Volunteer Park Playground, where bids came in $60,000 more than expected due to the ADA compliant pathway and the poured-in-place surface for the playground. Again, no impact to the tax rate, as these are available funds, and the Select Board voted to approve this at a vote of five in favor and none opposed. Again, the Finance Committee will make the recommendation on September 1st. Article 3 is a housekeeping article. This is to rescind previous borrowing authorizations. There are two recisions to be made, one from Article 24 from the annual town meeting of 2009, and that is $25,000 remaining for road projects. The second is $16,635 in borrowing authorization remaining from the Fire Station Design and Construction Article from Special Town Meeting of October 7th, 202013. The funds are remaining because the projects came in underbid. Per Mass General Law, town meeting's authorization to rescind the borrowing is required, as it was town meeting who approved the borrowing authorization. There's no financial impact, this just removes these authorizations from our authorized and unissued debt on our books. The Select Board voted to approve this by a vote of five in favor and none opposed. Article 4 is a transfer from the Wastewater Capital Stabilization Fund to the Belt Filter Press Project. The Belt Filter Press Project is eligible for 0% loans through the Clean Water Trust or the State Revolving Fund for an amount up to $5 million. The $1.3 million supplemental appropriation will come from the Wastewater Stabilization Fund, which was voted at the annual town meeting in May. This fund currently has a balance of over $6 million and is funded through those IMA or the intermunicipal agreement payments that the Town of Chatham has received from Harwich for them to use our wastewater treatment plant. This is not a borrowing authorization, this is a strict transfer of money from the capitalization fund to the project, so no borrowing will be necessary. The $1.3 million will save the taxpayers' money by not having to borrow and pay interest payments on this project. The Select Board reviewed this at their meeting last night, August 29th, and approved it by a vote of five in favor and none opposed. The Finance Committee again will review this at their meeting on September 1st. Please review that meeting for Articles 1, 2, 3, and 4 to view the Finance Committee votes.
Thank you, Alex. Our next article is Article 5, the New Center for Active Living Facility Design and Construction at 1610 and 0 Main Street. To begin our presentation on Article 5 is Leah Lacrosse.
Thank you, Jill. Hello, everyone. My name is Leah Lacrosse, and I'm the Director of Community Services. My position encompasses oversight of the Council on Aging, Recreation, and Beaches Departments, but today I'll be discussing Article 5, which seeks funding in the amount of $11,646,101 in order to design, construct, and equip a new 10,965-square-foot, two-story Center for Active Living at 1610 Main Street in West Chatham. This article will require a two-thirds majority vote. The funding mechanism for this article is a capital debt exclusion question, which was approved ballot question one at the annual town election on Thursday, May 11th, 2023. I'm now going to turn this over to this portion of the presentation over to Terry Whalen to provide an overview of the planning chronology and project highlights.
Thanks, Leah. I'm Terry Whalen, Principal Projects and Operations Administrator. The Town continues to pursue a new Center for Active Living Facility to replace the existing functionally obsolete building for the continuing and future provision of Council on Aging services. This project was initiated in 2011 through baseline analyses, with public input to determine senior center programming needs via a community needs assessment in 2015, and review of the existing building at 193 Stony Hill Road in the context of these findings, which determined the facility could no longer meet existing or future programming needs. In addition to the establishment of the planning baseline over the course of this project, multiple comprehensive site searches were conducted of all available town parcels, with more detailed test-fit analyses being conducted on those with potential to meet the town's needs, including a detached facility on the community center property. The first outcome of these site search efforts resulted in a proposal for a new facility on town-owned property off Middle Road. This proposal obtained a majority vote but fell short of the required two-thirds majority vote at the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. Another review of town-owned parcels was directed by the Select Board, with the universe of potential sites broadened to include private parcels after the second comprehensive town parcel search did not yield a viable site option. In 2020, privately-owned land at 1610 and 0 Main Street was offered to the town for purchase through a request for proposals and was subsequently donated by the property owner for use as a senior center. A special town meeting held January 4, 2020 authorized the acquisition of 1610 and 0 Main Street by purchase or donation. This specifically authorized the Select Board to accept the donation of land and appropriated $130,000 from free cash to fund a feasibility study, completion of a concept design, and cost estimate for a new COA facility at 1610 Main Street. With input from a broad working group, including Select Board members, other town committee members, and public representatives, a proposal for a new facility at this location was submitted to the annual town meeting. However, due to COVID-19, it was deferred to the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, where a revised proposal obtained a majority vote but again failed to obtain the required two-thirds majority vote. A detailed overview, description of the above chronology, locations reviewed, as well as all supporting project documentation can be found on the Town's project webpage under a link for New Chatham Center for Active Living Project. Following the failure of the project proposed at 1610 Main Street to obtain the required two-thirds majority vote at the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, the Select Board sponsored a community forum on November 9, 2021, to solicit public input on the future of the project. The Select Board and the COA Board of Directors reviewed and discussed the forum's findings on December 7, 2021. This resulted in a board vote for the Town Manager to come up with available funds to commence a feasibility study for an attached building at the community center, with programming as directed by the Council on Aging Board of Directors, and a bifurcated model with a new scaled-down building at the current site and programming at the community center. On August 16, 2022, the Select Board received a presentation by the architect and owner's project manager on additional siting options at the community center and the existing building at 193 Stony Hill Road. No acceptable alternative at either site was identified by the Select Board for continued study. In December 2022, the Select Board received a recommendation from the COA Board of Directors for a new Center for Active Living Facility to be located off Oldcomers Road on the town-owned Marconi property. With the re-offering of 1610 Main Street as a viable site location and Select Board acceptance of such, in February of 2023, the project team revisited the conceptual design in the context of programming lessons learned during COVID, accommodation of supportive adult daycare within the existing floor plan, and building code regulatory changes since the previous project cost estimate. This revised building proposal enhances the ability of the Council on Aging to meet the current service needs of the community within the proposed footprint of the earlier concept. The proposed 10,965-square-foot purpose-built building will also meet the space and storage needs of the Center for Active Living by providing room for required apparatus and meeting the requests of residents brought forth through the 2015 Community Needs Assessment and 2021 Community Forum. The building will include modern heating, ventilation, and cooling components required for public assembly, will be designed to comply with energy efficiency requirements, and provide an emergency generator so the facility can potentially be used as a warming cooling center during events with extended power outages. While the appropriation and debt authorization request for this purpose was not approved by the required two-thirds majority at the May 6, 2023 Annual Town Meeting, a debt exclusion question seeking to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called, the amounts required to pay for bonds issued for the purpose of paying the cost of design, construction, and equipping of a new Center for Active Living formerly known as Council on Aging Facility at the 1610 Main Street site was approved via ballot question number one at the annual town election Thursday, May 11, 2023. Additional project design highlights for the proposed Center for Active Living at 1610 Main Street include: The 1610 Main Street site, under consideration, is comprised of two parcels with a total area of 58,390 square feet. Under the zoning bylaw, after adjusting for the 1,330 square feet of wetland resource area found at the rear of the property, the total buildable upland for the site is 57,060 square feet. The 1610 Main Street site is located outside the existing Runway Protection Zone, or RPZ, not under the existing approach nor the proposed Airport Master Plan Update proposed approach. In developing the site layout, regulatory buffer areas associated with the location of wetland resource areas on the site were taken into consideration to avoid direct impacts to the wetland resource area and 50-foot no-disturb zone, which is contained in the town's local wetlands bylaw. Direct conservation area impacts are limited to the outer extent of the 100-foot regulatory buffer zone to accommodate a level parking lot. The design includes a retaining wall as opposed to clearing a larger area requiring more fill on the site, thus reducing the clearing impacts and filling footprint within the buffer zone. A two-story, 10,960-square-foot building is oriented on the site, allowing for reduced massing along Main Street in keeping with the West Chatham neighborhood center character. The site has adjacency to town conservation land to the east, providing opportunities for direct open space enjoyment and programming and potential second-floor views of the pond. Parking is located on the side and the rear of the building to minimize the commercial look, in keeping with the comprehensive plans' design goals for neighborhood centers. The parking layout is configured with a 25-foot front yard setback and a 15-foot yard side setback, providing area for landscaping and buffer plantings along Main Street and screening of the adjacent residential property to the west. The site design includes 56 parking spaces, which includes four handicap spaces, minimal pavement slopes and travel distances to the main entrance, drop-off area to accommodate companion and van drop-off, and onsite accommodations for three COA vans, deliveries, trash enclosure, outdoor patio, and green areas. The Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority has confirmed that their buses can safely circulate through the site and are amenable to adding the new Center for Active Living site as a new bus stop. With the completion of the West Chatham Modern Roundabouts along Main Street, vehicle safety for the site is enhanced with the ability to easily reverse direction and employ safer right-turn-in, right-turn-out movements for access and egress. The site is also safely accessible for pedestrians and cyclists via the new multi-use path along the frontage. The total project budget has been refreshed to reflect current market conditions for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, which includes building construction costs of $8,772,173, owner's development costs of $1,425,000, project contingencies of $764,788, and emergency shelter components of $102,700, for a total of $11,646,101. For a detailed overview of the development project's cost estimate and the public bidding process for compliance with Massachusetts Procurement Law, a presentation by the project design team can be viewed or downloaded at your convenience by visiting the town's homepage, selecting "Meeting Videos" button, and navigating to the Select Board's August 22, 2023 meeting on the "On Demand Archive" page. The new building will be designed in accordance with revised building codes maximizing energy efficiency, which is consistent with Chatham's recently adopted general bylaws, Chapters 35 and 245, regarding energy-efficient designs for capital facility projects and the Local Stretch Energy Code. The building will be solar-ready upon completion for the town to participate in future program opportunities from the Cape and Vineyard Electric Collaborative, to mount solar panels without equipment, installation, or maintenance cost, as has been done on the police station, annex, fire station, and community center buildings to offset operational electrical costs. The project budget assumes a schedule with the completion of construction plans for bidding in early winter 2023, construction starting by April 2024, and the site development and building completed within 12 to 14 months with a projected occupancy by the summer of 2025. I'm going to turn the presentation back to Leah to review more specifically how the project proposed in Article 5 will meet the town's present and future programming needs.
Thank you, Terry. This new building proposal enhances the ability of the CCal to meet the current growing service needs of the community. This proposed new building will have expanded recreational, educational, social, and wellness programs, an adult supportive day program, counseling on sensitive topics such as legal, healthcare, and caregiver topics, and the facility would be available for other municipal, citizen, and emergency uses. More than half of Chatham's 6,000-plus citizens will benefit directly from a modern senior center. We offer a multitude of services to the older adults in our community, including but not limited to: transportation to medical and mental health appointments, caregiver support groups, shine services, blood pressure clinics, legal services, foot care, Alzheimer's support groups, healthy meals in motion, and LGBTQ support group for older adults, arthritis exercise programs, and tax preparation services through AARP. Our largest service is providing outreach to our older adult residents followed closely by transportation. In fiscal year '23, we provided outreach services to 455 individuals. We conducted 441 outreach services in our own offices. We had a total of 195 telephone consultations, and we made a total of 61 home visits. We made 384 trips to and from the Orleans Day Program for six Chatham residents. We brought our participants to 220 medical appointments and made 63 grocery deliveries to those who are unable to drive to the market. We brought residents to Stop &amp; Shop to do their grocery shopping 68 times. We made 23 prescription deliveries. And in FY '23, we introduced a variety of new programs, including the Golden Oldies Movies at the CCal, computer classes, a coffee series with town officials, photography groups, cribbage, bridge, and mahjong groups, live band concerts, tour of local cultural venues, various travel lectures, and Art for Living series, meditation classes, yoga, and zumba gold, among numerous others. The total amount of attendance through all of our programs was 3,937. That means that the average individual attended five programs throughout the year. Attendance across our programs can be broken down by categories. For enrichment or socialization programs, there were 1,659 attendees. Health services, including screenings and benefit counseling, 677. We provided 619 lunches. 420 people attended our fitness and exercise programs. We provided cultural experiences to 214 people, community education to 154, income tax preparation to 106, and we distributed food to 88 people. If passed, Article 5 will allow us to open a much-needed adult supportive day program. An adult supportive day program is regulated through the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and these programs are allowed to operate in a Council on Aging and Senior Centers in Massachusetts. The ADSDP serves individuals who are in need of supervision, supportive services, socialization, and minimal assistance with activities of daily living, or ADLs. Participants in these programs may have challenges that prevent them from being home alone, but they're stable and do not need nursing, observation, or intervention. Participants in these, in the ADSDP programs must be able to communicate personal needs and are responsible for administering their own medications. This program is much different than the medical model, which is the Adult Day Health Program, where there must be several clinical staff present in order to operate. There are no clinical staff required to operate the program we intend to open in the new proposed CCal. In addition to the administrator, which in this case is the Director of the COA, there is only one staff member for every six program participants. Program staff need only be trained in basic CPR, which we can provide in-house by the Fire Department if needed, and signs and indicators of potential abuse. There are no licensing requirements or fees, and only a signed contract attached to our current provider agreement is necessary. While the Office of Elder Affairs programs for Council on Aging and Senior Centers may inspect providers, they have no regular schedule or requirement to do so. Currently, the only adult supportive day program running on Cape Cod is operated at the Orleans Council of Aging. At this time, there are eight Chatham residents that attend the program due to the fact that there isn't an available program in their own town. A key component of the proposal for this 2023 article for a new Center for Active Living Facility at 1610 Main Street is the linkage form with the contingent subsequent articles in this warrant, including: Article 6, to change the existing site zoning to municipal or M; Article 7, for the contingent surplus declaration of the existing 193 Stony Hill, so the site can be made available for reuse as housing; and Article 8, providing design and engineering funding for the development of needed housing units at the 193 Stony Hill site. And now I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Alex Halala.
My name is Alex Halala, and I'm here to talk about the fiscal impact for Article 5, the New Center for Active Living, which the Select Board recommended by a vote of four in favor, none opposed, at an amount of $11,646,101. The tax impact for the first year of borrowing would be nine cents per $1,000 valuation. The final year impact would be four cents. For a house valued at $2 million, the first-year increase for borrowing would be $190.61, and the final-year increase on a 20-year loan would be $99.83. For a house valued at $1 million, the first-year impact would be $95.30, and the final year, This is based on a 20-year loan at a 5% interest rate, which is what our financial advisors have advised at this time when we look to project out what debt service might be in a couple of years. It's important to note that the debt service will not hit the tax rate until FY 2026 at the earliest, and possibly it will be incremented in partial borrowing. So we would not borrow for the full $11 million all at once, possibly half of that at one time, and then another half when the project is complete. So these are the most conservative debt projections that we have, based on the full borrowing all at once. There's been questions on whether or not we have the capacity to handle additional debt service, and I'd like to assure the town that we do have the capacity for debt service. Our debt limits are based on our FY 2022 equalized valuation, as certified by the Department of Revenue. For FY 2022, our EQV was $8,768,778,800. 5% of that is $438 million. Our long-term debt outstanding, including outstanding short-term debt and authorized unissued debt, is $176 million, and I'm rounding up just for this purpose. Our available debt, or the amount of debt that the town can issue as of the date of this taping, is $275,019,758. There's a very extensive discussion on debt service and what is debt, what is authorized unissued debt, and the debt limits that was presented to the Select Board at their meeting on August 29, 2023. For more information and an in-depth look at debt, I would request the citizens tune into this meeting for a full discussion.
Hi, I'm Katie Donovan. I'm the Director of Community Development, and I'm here today to talk to you about Article 6, a zoning bylaw amendment and zoning map change for 1610 and 0 Main Street. This article is to see if the town will vote to amend its existing protective zoning map by rezoning 25,310 square feet of land at 1610 Main Street, identified on the assessor's map as 9E2-1, and 33,080 square feet of land at 0 Main Street, identified on the assessor's map as 9E-2-2, from the R20 Basic District to the municipal basic district. Approving these zoning district changes provides greater design flexibility, as this project is a municipal project and should be designed in accordance with those regulations. Special Town Meeting action on this article is contingent upon the passage of Article 5. The Select Board voted to recommend this article in a vote of four in favor, zero against, with zero abstentions. The Planning Board voted to recommend this article with seven in favor, zero against, and zero abstentions. The Finance Committee will be making their recommendation on Town Meeting floor. This vote requires a two-thirds majority vote at Town Meeting. And now I'd like to introduce Gloria McPherson, our Housing and Sustainability Director, to introduce Article 7 and 8.
Hi, I'm Gloria McPherson. I'm the Town's Housing and Sustainability Director. I'm here to talk about two articles on the special town meeting warrant. Article 7 is the Declaration of Surplus Town Property at 193 Stony Hill Road. Article 7 proposes to convert the current use of the property at 193 Stony Hill Road from council on aging use to affordable and/or attainable housing for our workforce. The process of transferring the use from the Center for Active Living to housing requires both action by the Select Board as well as a two-thirds vote of Town Meeting to declare the property surplus and to change the purpose for which the property was originally acquired. The Select Board, at their meeting of August 29th, voted to declare the property surplus contingent upon Special Town Meeting approval of a new Center for Active Living at 1610 Main Street. The debt exclusion ballot question to fund a new Center for Active Living was previously approved at the annual town election on May 11th. I think we can all agree that there's a lack of affordable and attainable housing in Chatham, which significantly affects our economic and social sustainability, making it difficult to attract and retain generational, working, and young families in town. The identification and development of municipal parcels that are suitable for housing is a key strategy of the 2018 Housing Production Plan to increase our housing resources. This article is contingent upon approval of Article 5 at Special Town Meeting. If Town Meeting votes to authorize a new Center for Active Living Facility project at 1610 Main Street, then by voting for this article, Article 7, the property at 193 Stony Hill Road would be utilized for affordable and/or attainable housing once the new Council on Aging facility is completed and occupied. The Select Board voted to recommend approval of this warrant article, 400. The Finance Committee will be making its recommendation at Special Town Meeting. Article 8, Design and Engineering for Reuse of 193 Stony Hill Road. Article 8 is a funding article that's being proposed in support of Article 7. This article is contingent upon Town Meeting approval of Article 5. This article is contingent upon Town Meeting approval of Article Five for a new Center for Active Living Facility at 1610 Main Street, as well as approval of Article Seven, which will change the existing use of 193 Stony Hill Road from the Center for Active Living to affordable and/or attainable housing for our workforce. The debt exclusion question to fund a new Center for Active Living was previously approved by the voters at the annual town election on May 11. Article Eight requests $75,000, which will be used for architectural design and engineering services for the redesign and renovation of the existing building or the redevelopment of the property to accommodate affordable and/or attainable housing units. The source of the requested $75,000 funding for this article is yet to be determined. The deed conveying 193 Stony Hill Road to the town in 1993 contained a restriction that prohibited the town from "the creation of apartments in or within the boundaries of the subject parcel." Per Mass General Laws, the use restriction will expire 30 years after the date of the deed, which is November 30, 2023. That said, the restriction would not preclude Town Meeting from authorizing the transfer of use of the property to housing, as is being requested in warrant Article Seven, if the article on the Center for Active Living at 1610 Main Street should pass first. Even now, as restricted, the property could still be utilized for affordable and/or attainable housing purposes, although not apartment use. The definition of apartment in the town zoning bylaw would not preclude homeownership units at the property. This funding article will enable the town to begin the process of repurposing the building and site at 193 Stony Hill Road simultaneously with work on the new Center for Active Living at 1610 Main Street, so that we're prepared to commence with construction as soon as the COA departs for the new facility. The Select Board voted to recommend approval of this warrant article, 400. The Finance Committee will be making its recommendation at Special Town Meeting.
Thank you, Gloria, and thank you, Team Chatham. And thank you to our viewers for watching the Special Town Meeting Preview Show. The warrant for the Special Town Meeting is available online on the town's website, and hard copies will be available at town offices. The meeting takes place Monday, September 18, at 6:00 PM at the Monomoy Regional Middle School at 425 Pearl Road. Please try to arrive a little early to be issued your e-voting clicker and to participate in the test votes at the start of the meeting. First-time voters in Chatham must register to vote by 5:00 PM on September 8. Childcare for ages three and up is available by reservation. Please email smabel@chatham-ma.gov no later than 12:00 noon on Friday, September 15, to reserve your child's spot. Transportation to Special Town Meeting is available by appointment. Call the Center for Active Living to reserve your seat. In addition to regular broadcasts on Comcast Channel 8, you can re-watch this program on demand at the Chatham TV YouTube channel.